I think you're muted if you're talking, Bill.
I'm not going to repeat it. I'm just making introductions. We've got Kristi Anastasia online. There she is. We've got Meredith Randolph, Vice Chair, and we've got Dave Ashmore. Dave?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Hi.
Dave? Howdy. All right, first item on the agenda tonight, we've got approval of minutes, those from the last public hearing. Sorry, not public hearing, but hearing we had here on October 27th. And anybody want to make a motion about the minutes? Feel free.
Meredith Randolph, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of October, whatever it was.
Twenty seventh.
Kristi seconded that.
Excellent.
The one with the date, not the one with whatever in it.
The one for October 27th. So all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, I.
Kristi?
Anastasia, I.
Dave? That looks like an I.
Dave, I.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, I.
Myself, we mainly, I. We'll back up and Kristi, you want to do the Zoom spiel? Kristi?
Yeah, sorry, there's all sorts of commotion going on.
Oh, excellent. You want to give the Zoom spiel?
Yes, sorry. You are on Zoom. Some of the planning board meeting folks are also zooming in and some of the planning board meetings are in the town office. I am signing in as myself, Bill, per the recommendation of Kyle. And so I don't think I have the ability to mute people anymore. Maybe I do. Let me see. Yeah, I don't think I have the ability to mute anybody anymore because I did that. So if you are making background noise, please shut off your microphone. And in the chat, if you want to put your name, we can use that for the participant list. But we don't use the chat for side conversations. And it looks like we have about six people here, so we can accommodate 594 more.
Oh, excellent. Well, thank you. All right, so we've got the Zoom spiel out of the way, the minutes. Looks like we're on to item three on the agenda tonight, which is subdivision approval applications. And tonight, we have a public hearing for subdivision application oh oh four, 2021. Owner name is A.C. Fernalds and Sons. Agent is Jeff Tuenison, Haley Ward. Location is 1049 Main Street, Somerville. Tax map 10, lot 147, zoning district Village Commercial. Shoreland Residential 3 in Shoreland Commercial. And the purpose is section 5.13 of the subdivision ordinance. Plan revisions after approval, creation of a new lot from a previously approved subdivision. And that was original plan file 41, number 136, recorded April 2nd, 2013. And amendment number one, plan file 41, number 146, recorded April 23rd, 2013. And was this one advertised?
This is a public hearing. So yes, it was advertised twice.
Yep.
First one was 14 days, excuse me, before the meeting day, which was October 21st. And then the second one was October 28th.
Yep.
And letters notices were sent out, excuse me, on the 28th.
Excellent, thanks. So we're at the last hearing on the 27th. We found the application complete. We've got a public hearing tonight, so we'll open the floor up shortly for public comment. And then we've got to find a have a finding on compliance. And then we've got some pending approval of the application, then we've got some plans to sign. And just would encourage everybody, you know, pending the positive outcome of this application, everybody get in and sign as soon as you can. We've got the sheets here ready to go. And one question too, before we get into it, Dave, how long are you around still before I forget? When do you fly south?
Probably leave in December 1st.
Okay. Plenty of time to sign.
Yes.
Fantastic. All right. Before we open it up to the public hearings, or anything the agent would like to address the board with? Comment on, make any introduction?
I'll just, I can introduce myself again. Sean Thies with Haley Ward. Filling in for Jeff Tuenison again tonight. It doesn't look like there's anybody new that wasn't at the last meeting to hear the overview of the project, unless there's somebody in the audience there in the town office. Otherwise, I can give an overview if you'd like, but I don't want to waste anybody's time repeating myself.
Was everybody here at the 27th meeting? Do you need that explanation of the what's going on? No, no, okay. They're good.
They're good.
Okay, I'm happy to answer any questions that come up.
Great, thank you. I'll then open it up to the floor for any public comment.
She was wondering, I'm just curious. The last meeting that I attended, that it's that there is going to be nothing built on this lot? And that there's no road that goes into the hall? And that it was just, did I understand right, that it's supposed to be a green space? Yeah, that's the corner of my desk.
So that's all. The board, yeah, the board doesn't have any jurisdiction to say what can and can't be built. They're looking at the lot to meet the zoning dimensional requirements for the district the property is located. This is before then because it is a creation of a new lot from a previous subdivision, which had the cell tower and then the dango hydro. And then they retain the land, you know, a majority of the land behind it.
Right.
This is going to incorporate a little over two acres. And it's going to have the main, the white building on it that currently is there with a multi-use building right now.
Kitterage building.
Yes, the Kitterage building, yeah. And any future development will be permitted through the Home Enforcement Officer. Or depending on the use, like say if somebody wanted to, excuse me, establish a restaurant there, they would have to go to planning board. But just any like residential use would be permitted by me. If they're going to add three or more dwelling units within a five-year period, that would cause the new owner, that would cause subdivision review for dwelling units. So it's not, it's not dedicated green space that I'm aware of. It's not presented that way in the application.
I have the understanding that they're talking that there's no road to go in and out of this separate spot?
They come off of Route 102 or Main Street. That's their frontage off of the main road. The way it comes in, there's two driveways that kind of do a circular loop behind the building.
I mean, it's the small spot that's towards the back of the floor.
Maybe you should screen share the site.
Maybe I just understood. I'm just curious.
Yeah, oh, you're welcome to ask questions.
Just got the corner of my backyard.
Sean, can you pull up the, or can you screen share your, the site plans to see what she's worrying about?
Can someone summarize her question too? I had a hard time hearing it.
If, if I understand correctly, Kristi, it's a question about access.
Yeah. It's the back corner, you might want to come up front. I forgot.
It's as, it's a It's a, it's a question from the residential butter on the back of the lot about access to the, to the lot.
Maybe I misunderstood last week, they were talking about.
There's the site plan. There's the site plan. Is there an area that you were specifically?
Yeah, I've got a small version of that. I just thought it was so tucked back. And I guess I misunderstood the previous week. That there's no relevant, not relevant to this back part, no work proposed? None proposed to landscape on lot or construction? No need for any erosion plan in?
Right, the reason for that is because there's no development being proposed with this division. It's already developed right now with what you see today.
Sure.
Any future development, they'll have to come in and pull permits and do the erosion control, the soil monitor, when the new buyer, or if they retain it, if they decide to develop the lot.
I misunderstood. I thought it was divided into two sections, the Kitterage building for one to be sold and then the back.
No, it's just over a two-acre lot which incorporates the Kitterage building.
Okay, maybe I just.
It's not two separate lots.
Okay, I thought it was either, okay.
But Kim, I kind of agree. I mean, that's, that's been the way that we keep on framing it is it's just about the two-acre lot, but you're taking one lot and making it two lots. So I keep on sort of, I guess, I probably am the one that created this confusion is I see it as one, you know, just that both lots are relevant. You're taking one lot, you're making two lots. And both sides of the lot line matter. We can't just focus on the two acres of the Kitterage Brook building because the other lot is as much changed by this as the Kitterage Brook building lot.
Now, when you guys saw, when you saw the plan initially, when Jeff presented it at the sketch plan, he was at, he asked you if you wanted to see the full plan or just what is being proposed for the division. The whole plan would have shown you that this lot is, it's a fairly large lot. It goes back quite a ways. It does have, you can see the square where the, it's kind of dotted, where that's the cell tower lot, and then behind that is the hydro lot. Now, the one that has the house behind it, the, hold on a second. This lot right here, that's not part of the subdivision.
No.
So see, that's why you're probably confused, it's because this lot goes way down here. And so this is the cell tower. And then back here is the hydro, right there.
Right, I understand it.
Okay. And then your lot is right there and looks like there. I think they're one though.
Yeah, I'm one. That's what confused me.
Yeah, I don't know why it shows it like you are a lot.
And there's an easement line.
Yeah, right here, the utility for the hydro, I believe.
But that's on the road, isn't it?
No, the road's right here.
Yeah, no, no.
And then this one.
On poor Village Park Road. It goes in front of my house.
That's, yeah, that's, that's up here.
Yeah.
Village Park Road is up here.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this is, I believe, a hydro on utility easement, where the power lines are.
Sure.
So that's just an easement, that where the above ground power lines are going through this lot.
Okay, so I didn't realize it went over my lot.
But the lot, yeah, you'd have to read the D.
Okay.
For sure it goes across your lot.
Again, okay, I got it, okay.
But the lot in question is right here.
Okay. Oh, I see, okay, I thought it was right here. I got it. So there's the road that can go back behind it.
It's Kitterage, yeah. And that's the little shop that
Has the flowers.
For it, yeah. Yeah, that's that lot.
Yeah.
But that's not part of this.
No, that's separate.
This is the piece, and then the driveway goes up like this.
Yeah. Okay.
And then there's, there's a parking up on the upper level.
But Kim, I was confused. I thought that was being divided into two separate lots.
This piece, this, with that, is that what you're saying? No, this is that, clear?
No.
Or, or work? This is the house that sits back. He uses the same road as hydro and global towers, he uses it to access his dry left through here.
Yeah.
But these guys are coming off here, they're driving, they're not using this right away.
So that's, that's the one lot. Okay, I thought that that corner piece next to my property, that was going to be sectioned off to a different lot.
This here? Yeah, no.
Okay.
This side exists, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Yeah, the lot, like I said, the lot goes like this.
Yeah.
And then it comes up and then it goes back along this.
Okay, I got it, okay.
One misunderstood. So is that clear for you now?
Yeah, I understand. That's all one, one lot, but I thought it was like that one.
This is one, this is what they're dividing off of their big pieces back here.
Okay, got it, okay. I understand now. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I can't just figure, try to figure my, figure it out, okay.
Right, any further questions, commentary from the public? Going once? Twice? All right, let's close the public hearing and you know, we've done this a couple of different ways in the past, and I, I think the next thing we need to do is get a, a finding on compliance. And just to remind everybody, you know, the, the last hearing on the 27th, we went through, you know, we went through completeness where we went, just drilled through the sections 421, 422, 423, section five. And then we went through 6A, B and C, and 59. And if the board would like to chippy chat about anything, let's do it now. And if not, I'd say we get a motion on the table regarding compliance.
I, I had concerns about this. Well, I guess because we keep on talking about, like, the only lot that we're viewing here is the Kitterage Brook building lot. In relevance, and it seems to me that both lots, do we have adequate road frontage for the back lot? That everything, we can't make a non-conforming lot by cutting this lot off. So it seems to me, I guess I just, it seems to me that both lots are equally in question. And need to be reviewed, not just the Kitterage Brook building.
The back lot does have adequate road frontage. It's got a 50-foot wide right of way that is called Stone Hedge Way. And technically, that's all they need is a 50-foot wide right of way, but they have more frontage than that on my lot that they're retaining.
They have more, yes, simply, I, all I see that comes down to the road is the 50-foot right of way.
That's all they need for road frontage.
Because they've created a subdivision road.
That's correct.
So does a subdivision road meet all the requirements of a subdivision road?
Yes, that was approved when you guys did the cell tower.
Okay, I thought that was what came up in question, that it wasn't really a developed road or something, or it wasn't well enough developed. And then you kind of blew it off as, well, there's, it's only, it's not really a road. It's like, it's a road into a subdivision.
It's a road, and it was brought up in 2013. It was actually, you guys were going to do a performance bond or require a performance bond through global towers to make sure the road is put in, in compliance, and also had the fire chief go look at it. And they did. And there's a cul-de-sac at the end where the cell tower lot is in front of Versa. That was all approved in 13, so right now you're looking at just the Kitterage lot to make sure that lot meets all the dimensional requirements. They got 261 feet of road frontage in the Village Commercial District. Which technically, it's only served on one lot. They only need 20 feet. And then the lot is just over, is 2.15 acres. They're on town sewer, so the lot needs to be a minimum of 5,000 square feet. The building meets all setbacks, because they only have a five-foot setback. And they have a 10-foot from the edge of the white line of Main Street. That all meets setbacks. I'm sorry, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so.
You're doing well, though.
Well, no, but I'm just, maybe that's why the question's already
Thank you for being here, because I got confused.
I just, I am still confused as to what is, I feel like you go, the rock, lot that this new lot is being created off of. I know it's a big lot, but where is it? Obviously, it goes up the road. But then I see the road.
Sean, do you have anything you could screen share showing the entirety of the remaining lot?
What's the shape of this lot? Where is it?
Yeah, let me share. I think, I think they have the copy of the tax map, which probably shows the entire lot boundary. So believe it is this map 10, lot 147?
Yes.
You see the overall shape, the entire lot, all the way to the back?
But that doesn't show the cutout that's lot three. Why does it not show lot three or the easement to bank? So that's just an easement, but lot, the, the cell tower is on its own lot, right?
Yes, it's leased, so it's not a lot. It's a leased area.
That's this area right here, correct?
Yes.
So that's basically like a rental unit on a lot, because it says lot three, origin of sub, original subdivision. It doesn't say it, it, the, this map designates it as its own lot.
It's a leased area. It says leased right on it.
Oh, okay. But it says lot three.
Well, because he's showing that that was, because it's leased, you have to count it towards, as a lot in the subdivision.
So, so could you bypass a whole bunch of the rules of the subdivision if you lease lots? Rather than sell them? I mean.
No, because the subdivision by law is either by dwelling units leasing or sale of lots.
It doesn't show on the tax map because it's not an individual lot per
It's just a leased area.
I, I guess it just seems like that leased area completely blocks off the subdivision and it strikes me as
I mean, the 50-foot right of way extends past it.
And I guess it goes over it. I guess that's fine.
Yes, you guys already reviewed that.
Well, we've got subdivisions that, you know, we ended up in a mess because, you know, like the, the one on the Beech Hill Crossroad, you know, was an approved subdivision, but no road went in. And then, then people want to build a house in there, and we're telling them they have to put in a subdivision road just because they want to build a house. Because they didn't
Which one, Meredith?
That one on the Beech Hill Crossroad. It should have had a
The one that was next to the Haynes property. They ended up building their own road cut because they didn't want to improve the road that hadn't been improved.
And it shouldn't, it wasn't their responsibility, you know, it shouldn't have been their responsibility. Somebody else made the subdivision and benefited from selling off the lots. And here somebody wants to put in a right of way, and they're suddenly burdened with putting in a subdivision road because it should have been done before.
One you're talking about was, was conveyed without going to planning board. And they wanted to develop the lot, but they couldn't because they had to go to planning board to go for an amendment to a previous, previously approved subdivision because they, they conveyed the land without going to planning board. So that was something, that was kind of, they had to go back to the, and do that before they could develop that law to make it legal. That's a different situation.
I, Kim, I think you might be talking about the, what is that, cider ridge road?
No, I'm not talking. I'm talking about the one on the corner of Beech Hill Crossroad and Beech Hill Road.
No, this is
Kim's talking about, I mean, yeah, Meredith's talking about one further back.
So what is cider ridge?
And they, they just, they wanted, they were on a, in a subdivision and they wanted to use a right of way. They had access to a right of way, but the person who developed the subdivision didn't put in the road.
The one next to the, it's next to the granite museum.
It, it doesn't really matter. All I'm just saying is I just want to make sure that, that the Fernalds as the subdivision creator, that both sides of the lot are meeting the code and, and I just want to make sure we're not so focused on the Kitterage Brook that we're not ignoring the fact that what they're cutting it off from is creating something that doesn't work.
It's not. That would have been brought up, that should have been brought up during your completeness review anyways. Not now.
I did. I did.
But it's fine. If you look, that the Kitterage lot has 261 feet. It does not, it goes right beside the 50-foot wide right of way. They don't have any of that 50-foot right of way that serves the back lot in that lot at all. That lot has more than 50 feet, the 10147, the remainder of the land.
I guess in the previous meeting I had, I, I got the impression from the discussion that the the road was not meeting the subdivision standard, and we said, oh, but it's just a driveway to that one house.
No, it's not. It serves one, two, three, three lots and a leased area, but it's a 50-foot wide right of way.
Yeah, I had the impression that it wasn't, it wasn't developed enough. It's not just that they have to have 50-foot right of way. It has to all be, I don't, I don't know how, it looks like it's pretty developed on that aerial photograph.
The road's in, the road's fine. It was okay by the fire chief.
Okay.
That was all done in 2013. That was all done in 2013.
We, there was a moment in the last planning board where it was said, it doesn't matter. It's only a driveway. And I was like, guys, not only driveway, it's gone all the way up to the rest of the subdivision. And if it doesn't meet the code, we need to call it now. But if it does, that's fine.
Are you talking, you're not talking about where it branches off to that other guy's lot, are you?
I, for some reason, it was a comment that was made and it, it made me concerned. It was said, that's just a driveway going to that one lot and. Where I thought you'd gotten all distracted on, on one lot. Both lots matter. Hold on, let me make my screen. Uh, speaker. Oh, I can't, I can't see you because we're in shared screen mode.
There's, because we're talking about two different things. We're talking.
There's a driveway that branches off the 50 foot wide right of way to the back to the lot that's behind the Kidridge lot. That's a driveway. But then the right of way, that after that driveway branches off, it's 50 feet all the way from Main Street all the way up to Versum's.
So how is that, that, oh, driveway all the way to the road? Why is that not seen as a?
Because it serves three or more lots, so it had to have a 50 foot wide right of way.
On this plan, what goes, what the, both the right of way, the subdivision right of way and the driveway. The driveway goes down the center of the subdivision road and it's labeled in the middle of the subdivision road as driveway.
Because it is a driveway there.
Well, if it hits the road, it's not driveway anymore. It's subdivision road.
They're showing it's a driveway access for the existing dwelling. It's within a 50 foot wide right of way. It shows 50 feet on.
Oh, and it runs, it runs on the side of.
Yes. Exactly. But you can see it's a 50 foot right of way, the full length. If you look up to the middle of the plan above this. Name Anita Adira, you show it's 50 foot wide all the way down to the roadway. And you need a 50 foot wide right of way for a subdivision. Which is for the back lots.
Right. And the, the piece labeled driveway that goes to lot. 148 isn't a part of the subdivision, right?
No, it's not. It's just showing that it's the driveway access to the existing dwelling on. 1048, 148.
Right. Hold on, isn't there a point at which that 50, that, that what comes down the hill, it's gravel driveway and you got a 50 foot right of way and the driveway. Was labeled driveway and the 50 foot right of way. Cross and they all, they're doing this both in the same land. But I, you see the gravel road come down and it looks to me like they're saying these people's driveway is a subdivision road.
They, yeah, they accessed the beginning of the subdivision road to access their lot.
It's just.
And then they branch off to their lot. Their driveway is within the roadway of the subdivision. And that's all they're showing.
It seems like if you, if lots of people could, could draw their driveway down the center of a subdivision road and say, I'm not using the subdivision road. That's where my driveway is. Get out of lots of things. I mean, it's either subdivision road at that entrance, it's either subdivision road or it's a driveway. The fact that it gets labeled as both. Seems to me like you can't, can you have it as both? That doesn't make any sense.
Oh, they're showing you how lot 148 accesses their lot. They're showing that that's a driveway to 148, which goes through the 50 foot wide right of way. And then it's a 50 foot, uh, 33 foot wide easement. Over the remainder of the land. That's not the roadway area. Yes, Dave?
The way I look at it is the, the residential house up back has a 33 foot wide right of way. To access their property and, and it's shown as a 33 foot wide right of way and it goes right out to the highway. Also in the same place is showing where, where the two are together. It's showing a 50 foot wide right of way and it's also showing edge of gravel. It's kind of. Obliterated by the edge of the, um, you can see the dash lines. Right amongst the, the lines for the 33, 33 foot right of way. So I think, but what's shown here is, I think is very accurate. It probably would have been better if the word driveway was where the, you know, on the other side of, of this. 50 foot wide right of way, but I don't think, it, to me, it's very clear what's going on there.
I guess it's, it, uh, physically what's happening, I guess is just the like future problem. Like, okay, so. Uh, they need to pay, the people who live in that house want to pave their driveway. It's now also a subdivision road. So whose responsibility is it? Because it's, it's taken on two. Functions and how, why does that section of driveway have, need to be repaired at? Because it's not just their driveway. It's also a subdivision road. So do they get to actually pave a little strip up the center of the sub, 50 foot? Subdivision road to make to their driveway, even though that doesn't meet subdivision standards?
Depends what the easement says. It's just an easement. For access.
That's why I'm saying that I, I would have thought the driveway would stop at the edge of the subdivision road. And that they'd have a, it just wouldn't go all the way out to the road. That the, the easement, the driveway would hit the edge of the subdivision road and then they get out to the road on the road.
Yeah, but it wouldn't, it wouldn't be, it, it wouldn't be showing it correctly. It, it, they, they need to show the 33 foot wide easement on the surface. And that 33 foot easement goes to the highway. But there's no law that says you can't have two different width easements. In one location.
I guess it's not, it's not necessarily, sure, you can have two easements in one location, but the two different have, they're roadways and they have different standards. If they want to maintain their driveway, they want to maintain it to driveway standard, the subdivision has to maintain their subdivision road to subdivision standards. Does anybody else see the potential for a problem there? You've got land double labeled and whose responsibility is it? And when something, when a great big pothole develops in the middle of that, whose problem is it?
It's between the property owners. To worry about.
Okay.
Yeah, there are actually some laws that cover. Easement right of ways and access as far as associations and, and. Requiring people, if, if somebody wants to create an association, um, they can, they can do it. So I, I don't, I really don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Any further thoughts?
Um, I just had one question. What is the, on the gravel road, there's a dash line and then it says O H U. What does that mean?
Overhead utility.
Oh, thank you. Light bulb.
Thanks to me.
Thanks to Dave. Any other thoughts, guys? Questions, concerns? Do we want to migrate towards a motion for compliance?
I don't, about a motion for compliance or a motion for completeness?
We, we've already found it complete. We've had the public hearing. Now we need to find it compliant with the sections I rattled off earlier. And then we have a final motion for approval.
Okay, um, I can make a motion. Yeah, are you saying something, Meredith?
Yeah, because the, the whole thing that I brought up, it was brought up because they request waivers. Um, so can we find it in compliance until we grant the waivers that they requested?
About waivers?
Oh, you gotta review the waivers. Do you agree with their waivers? You should have done that.
Yeah, we've already, I thought we already did that.
We did, we did not vote on the waivers because this is, that was what was hanging me up and I was told we'd discuss it this meeting. And I said, can you just ask for a waiver and, and consider that completing the application? We don't, like, what happens if they don't get the waiver? Don't we have to discuss this? And we decided to discuss it in this meeting.
Yeah, the requests for waivers were for the landscape plan and the performance bond. So, you know, we, I thought we had the discussion about the, the performance bond kind of seemed like a moot point because there's no proposed construction. And then the landscape plan, same thing again, there, there just wasn't any landscaping planned. I mean, all we're doing is. Creating, creating the boundaries of a new lot. That's already developed.
But there is no open space. Uh, it was, it was something that came up in question and, and we did not have an agreement that. That they didn't have to have open space in the subdivision. Or, I mean, I guess if you're just cutting off a lot, but it seems to me that. Was, I don't know.
Open space was part of your completeness review. What'd you say about it?
That we would discuss it in this meeting.
I'd always said. He said the requests for waivers were for the landscape plan and the performance bond. And the two requests for waivers were noted in the application and Ms. Randolph. Reason that if the requests for wa- waiver are denied, the application cannot be considered complete. And then we talked further about the, you know, again, about the performance bond being a moot point as there's no construction. Same thing with the landscape plan is generally intended for land that will be developed. It's already developed. There's no further development. And, um. Sean would refer to the word and it's determine whether open space is a requirement. At this time, the applicant was not proposing any open space requirements. You know, I mean, i- in the past, we've, we've not required performance bonds for, for lot creation. Un- unless there's construction associated with it. And I can't remember the last time we even.
It was the cell tower that I remember, but the roadway, you were going to do a performance bond for them.
For them.
Right. For, for the roadway.
For the roadway.
Because of the grade, they wanted the fire chief standing on like a hammerhead and.
And we.
But of that, I don't recall any other performance bonds. The, and cell towers, you guys, I think you did, did you do them for the cell tower?
Usually we do them for the cell towers, it seems like.
You couldn't even discuss a performance bond here because they're only cutting off a lot. If we don't ask them to do anything that costs anything. You can't, I mean, how would you even determine what a performance bond would be when they're not doing anything?
So that's, that's what's NA and we just. Didn't really hover on that one.
Well, that was just assumed that, that we would grant that waiver. I guess, at least that was my impression of the last discussion was like, well, we'll just deal with the waivers at the next meeting. And that, well, we'll definitely give them the performance bond one. But then there was some discussion of like, oh no, it's a commercial subdivision and so we wouldn't ask them for open space. They wouldn't have ever been asked for open space and. Then somebody said, is that, when, when do, why do we open, ask for open spaces? But they've asked to be, for a waiver against it and. If we're going to grant them a waiver, I have to, I would think we need to have some understanding of what we're wavering.
So let's, let's do what we know. Let's do what we know and we know that a performance bond is a moot point here. So let's. Let's get a motion on the table about the requirement of a performance bond or not.
Uh, I make a motion that we approve the waiver for not having a performance bond.
Meredith Randolph on that.
And I would just add to that, as there is no new construction proposed.
As there is no new construction proposed.
Perfect. I think Meredith got the second on that. So all those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, Lee Manley, aye. So now we've got the second waiver request for the. Uh, open space requirement.
So open space provisions, which is under section 510. Which is part of section five, which is under completeness. The board may require that a proposed subdivision design include a landscape plan that will show the preservation of existing trees, 10 inches or more in diameter. Excuse me, the replacement of trees and vegetation, graded contour, streams. And a preservation of scenic, historic or environmental desirable areas. The street and lot layout shall be adapted to the photography and excessive grading and filling shall be avoided. That's going to be not applicable because they're not proposing any development. They may be asking for the waiver. I wasn't here unfortunately, but regarding having to include a landscape plan. That shows their, their preservation of existing trees, 10 inches or more in diameter. There's no streams on this property. Not in this area that they're proposing, uh, the lot. The street layout is already there. They're not adding any. They're not doing any grading or filling. So that's one section of the open space provision. The other one is for. Reserve an area of land for open space, recreational area for uses by, um, property owners in a subdivision. And that typically what you require for open space is we have you on a land division, like a big subdivision. And they've got a big chunk of land in the back, which is not developed. I'm not sure what the future plans will be, but at this time it's open space. I guess you'd have to, Sean, what, what was the request for the waiver of that for?
I, I think the way that's worded, it, it seems to me it more applies in a residential subdivision if you're designating open space within the subdivision for the. So may require that subdivision or reserve an area of land as an open space and or recreational. so may require that subdivider reserve an area of land as an open space and/or recreational area for use by property owners in the subdivision. So that seems to me it's more of recreational use for, if you're doing a residential subdivision for the homeowners to use space for recreational purposes. We're not proposing in this subdivision to reserve any land for other owners in the subdivision to use for any purposes. And I guess in, in both of those items, it just says the board may require. So it's not required that we do anything and I guess unless the board, uh, has some feelings or desire to try and, uh, to, I guess, enforce either one of those provisions.
What would be the reason for it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure.
Well, no, I'm saying. I don't think it applies here.
I don't think it applies either.
That's fine. I don't think it applies from reading it as well. But now that we've discussed it, I'd be willing to grant a waiver.
All right. I think that's a perfect opportunity to make a motion, Meredith.
Meredith Randolph, I make a motion that we grant the waiver for, uh, for open lands.
Open space.
Open space.
Dave Ashmore, second.
All right. All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. So we've got the, the waiver request taken care of. Any thoughts on compliance?
Can I say I make a motion to find this application in compliance with the sections previously stated by the chairman?
Heidi, did you get the previous section? Great, thank you. I think that holds water, Christie.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Any further discussion? All right, I'll call a vote. All those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. So we've, we've found it complete. We've found it compliant. We've had a public hearing. I think, um, unless there's any further discussion, there should be a final motion for approval.
I make a motion that we approve this application.
Dave Ashmore, second.
Any further discussion? None heard. I'll call the vote. All those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I would encourage everybody to come in and sign plans when they can.
Sooner the better because they need to record this.
Do we have our plan pen?
Kim, can, like, can I swing by on Friday to sign it?
Yep, we're not open tomorrow, but yeah, Friday would be absolutely wonderful.
Okay, thank you.
I'll have the final prop to Jim. Jeff, you have a concern about the overhead utility there? Easement, read your D.
I will, I'll go back and look at it.
If you don't have it, I can get it for you. The D. I'm not in tomorrow or Friday, but I will be Monday. But if you care, I, I'd get access to read, so I could read it and look at it.
All right, item four tonight, we've got other. Any other for us tonight? No.
I have nothing. The next meeting is December 8.
It's the, it's the only meeting in, in December. Anybody got anything else? Doesn't, doesn't look like it. Any ideas about adjournment?
I make a motion that we continue this meeting indefinitely. I make a motion that we adjourn.
Meredith Randolph, I second that.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor, Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye.